I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 12th, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there are a few items in the table filed.
Yes, a couple of items in the table filed this evening. First, you'll have the copy of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation summary. We also have a ratification of employment action. There are some appointments, a leave of absence, and a couple of retirements, resignations.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School Board to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes of the meeting, of the regular school board meeting, excuse me, held on Monday, January 29th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 29th, 2018, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Hillman, announcements and recognition.
Yes, I have several announcements this evening. First, two students from Northfield Middle School and two students from Northfield High School have been invited to participate in the 2018 Minnesota String and Orchestra Teachers Association, Min-Soda Middle Level Honors Orchestra. This year, this select group of string players from across the state earn an invitation to play in the honors orchestra, this is for grades seven through nine, based on an audition recording of their playing. We want to congratulate Kiran Decker, who is a seventh grader playing viola, Rory Lane plays violin in ninth grade, Roden Lampart is a seventh grade viola player, and Annika Richardson is a ninth grade violin player. We'd also like to congratulate Nadia Cookshous and Ralph, who's an eighth grade viola player, and Isai Martinez, eighth grade bass, for being selected first alternate on their instruments. So, the Minnesota, the Min-Soda Middle Level Honors Orchestra will perform Saturday, February 24th, at 11:00 AM at the Minneapolis Convention Center, in conjunction with the annual Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Clinic. So, congratulations to those students. We're very proud of our orchestra program and just another validation of the work that our students do in that program. So, we also, as our charters, this next announcement is as a very proud charter school authorizer. And I'm really pleased to report that Prairie Creek Music School teacher, Michelle Martin, someone who has presented to this board numerous times, has been selected as the 2018 Elementary School of Social Studies Teacher of the Year. The Minnesota, the MCSS will be providing, that's the Minnesota Council for Social Studies, will be providing a press release that we'll share a little bit later on, but we wanted to make sure that folks knew about this. We want to make sure that people know that Michelle's been given the award for her dedication to her students' excellence in teaching and social studies content, and her impact on colleagues. And Michelle will be honored with three other educators at the MCSS dinner on March 4th at the James J. Hill House in St. Paul. So, again, one of only three school districts in the state that continue to authorize charter schools, and we're really proud of Prairie Creek and, in this case, of Michelle Martin, someone who has presented to us numerous times. So, that's exciting. We also want to congratulate Northfield High School Biology teacher, Jody Saxton-West, for being accepted by the college board as a main conference presenter at the 2018 AP Annual Conference in Houston, Texas, on July 20th and 21st. Just to be clear, BioRad, which is a company that you have heard of, we've partnered with BioRad in the past for our students to actually do some real-world validation of their research, is going to be paying for all of Jody's conference-related expenses. And her session titled "culminating laboratory experiences in AP Biology" will detail the lab experiences that our AP Biology students have just before and after the AP Biology exam. And she'll include a slideshow of our students and their work to show off the students. Now, the National AP Conference is a big deal, so, and there's lots of people who apply to present, so this is a, it's a very auspicious honor for Jody and represents the school district very well, so congratulations to Jody. And then finally, last weekend, we had our one-act play festival, and if people know, Northfield's a little bit different. Most schools have one, single, one-act play that they cast and produce, and there's usually, you know, a professional director who's on staff, and they compete in the Minnesota State High School League. We typically have not done that. This is the first year that one of our one-act plays actually was entered in the state high school league competition in Kassen back in January, but we highlighted five different one-act plays over the weekend, three different performances. Again, these are student-produced, student-directed, and two of the five written by students. And so, again, a very inclusive method in our feeder department, and just, all of them are outstanding, really proud of our students, the students who acted, the students who wrote, produced, and directed. And just, again, one of those other things that's just special about being here in Northfield. So, thanks to those students, and Joe Dorison, who's their advisor for putting that on. Those are your announcements for February 12th.
Excellent. Board members, anything they would like to add?
Well, I was expecting to be one of the announcements, so I don't have the details. Didn't the music-listening team win the championship just a little while ago?
We have not received anything as of yet that I'm aware of.
I've seen pictures of music-listening people holding trophies, so that'll come a different...
It might be like the Grammys, and you've got some leaked information. Though, I think that it's fair to say that our music-listening team is a dynasty.
Yes.
And so, it wouldn't shock anyone. I have not seen any announcement from that, but we will certainly follow up on that and check on the music-listening team.
Excellent. Okay, good. So, we are ready now to move on for discussion, items for discussion and report. Tonight, we welcome middle school principal Brent Gellino and math teacher Dan Myers, who are presenting a middle school mathematics curriculum update. And as board members know, your PowerPoint was in your packets.
Good evening. Dan Myers and I, and I'll acknowledge Tina Doc, and also math teachers here, to make sure that we're staying in line, so you're the timekeeper, Tina. Dan and I are here because we thought that it would be a good opportunity to bring to the board kind of where we're at with math. And at the middle school, we really, I'm impressed upon staff, and they really grabbed a hold of a growth mindset. And part of the growth mindset is looking at what you're currently doing and saying, okay, now what's next? What can we do that's better? But what you have to do is, you have to really take a good, hard look at even programs that for years have been what people perceive as being an excellent program. And our math program is one of those that has been successful, but you don't want to ignore those programs, you still want to take a look at them. So, that's kind of where this started. So, we're going to go through, and Dan's going to walk you through what our current programming is, and then I'm going to come back, and I will talk about something that we're seriously considering moving forward and why we're considering it. So, I will pass it over to Mr. Myers.
Okay, currently at the middle school, and this has been this way largely for a long time, since I've been at the middle school, this has been the current structure. I've been there for 12 years, and some of the names have changed, but, sorry, it's kind of sound all right. Coming out of fifth grade, the top students, the most successful math students in fifth grade using fourth and fifth grade data are chosen to be into pre-algebra six. And that goes off of math scores, map scores, MCA scores, and teacher recommendation. Those students in the pre-algebra six, it ends up being about one section of kids, so about 30 students. If they stay on track, they would take Algebra I in seventh grade, Algebra II in eighth grade, and then in high school, again, if they stay on track, they would have the opportunity to take two AP classes in high school in their junior year and their senior year. All other students that don't get into that cohort are in a class called Math Six, which is your regular sixth-grade math by the current, kind of the current setup. There is one level in the middle there called Math Six Plus that we have done in the past, if there's been a lot of students who didn't quite get into the pre-algebra six, but are, we identified there's a large enough cohort that needs some enrichment. We have done that in the past, we're not doing that this year. In seventh grade, those students who successfully completed pre-algebra in sixth grade would take Algebra in seventh grade, Algebra I. And then the other students that were in Math Six the year before then would either take pre-algebra single A or pre-algebra double A. One big misconception, since there are three levels, people think that the pre, the single A level is low math or remedial math, and that's not true. That is a grade-level class. We teach the Minnesota grade-level standards in that class. The difference between single A and double A is that double A class then would have more enrichment topics, they'd be able to move a little bit faster, sort of for kids with a little higher skill level that are able to not only learn the grade-level standards but go a little bit beyond it in that year. Students who are in the double A track can take one year of AP class when they get to high school also. As their senior year, they would have that opportunity. And then that, into eighth grade then, the upper cohort is in Algebra II in eighth grade, and then move on to geometry in ninth grade. And then we've got Algebra double A and Algebra single A, which are almost exactly same structure as pre-algebra, single A and double A. And then on to the high school flowchart after that with the four class offerings that they offer in ninth grade. Does that kind of paint a picture of where things are at, or any questions about the current structure? Okay, back to Greg.
Thanks, Dan. The key piece to this is, as you go through and you look at the A and double A structure, and Dan did a nice job of explaining, because it is a misconception that the A is on the lower class or remedial class, and that's totally not true. So, if you look at this, it's the same for seventh grade, that double A track is really an enriched accelerated class in itself. And people, a lot of times, don't do it that way, but since you can get to an AP class your senior year, that's what makes it an enriched class, because what most people would call a typical track would get you to a pre-calculus, not an AP class. So, that is an enriched class. So, really, in our current structure, we offer two enriched classes, and then one, what I'll call middle road or typical track that most students take. And that's where the MTSS comes in, is that's the support we use for students that need remediation. So, now, what are we going to look at? Well, part of the analysis that I wanted to do with Hope Langston's help was, how are our students that are in pre-algebra that leave us and go to the high school, where are they ending up? Are they finishing the track that we set them on when they left the middle school, which means they take an AP stats class their junior, and then they take AP calculus their senior year? So, we went, I asked Hope, I said, hey, can you go back, take this year's senior class, and then go back even three more years, and let's see just where they were? Doing a little analysis. So, how you read the graph, and I apologize, it's a little difficult to read, but I can explain by color to make it easier. The blue piece on there are the students, the percent of students that stayed on the trajectory that we kind of set them off. So, they took the AP stats their junior year, and then they took AP calc their senior. The little orange pie piece on those are students that, for lack of a better way of putting it, and I wrestle with how to do this, but it's the best way to explain it, is they dropped down a repeat of one class. So, they only took one AP class instead of doing two. And then the gray kind of pie piece are students that dropped down two. So, if you convert that to the middle school, and it's not a perfect analogy, but it kind of gives you a pretty good idea, that orange gap would be the students that dropped down to the double A for middle school, and then the gray ones would be the ones that were in the A. And again, this is just showing our students that started off in pre-algebra six. So, you can see, this year's on the left, or this year's seniors back one year, and if I flip this slide, you can go back even two more years. 2015, I'd have to do some digging. The numbers are accurate, but I'm not sure what changed as those students are going through. Clearly, as someone with any math background would say, it's okay, something happened. And I'm not sure what that is. So, it's kind of a little bit of an outlier, but I wanted to go back at least, take a look at four different cohorts. So, that's, you can kind of see, there's a pretty good chunk of our students, though, that don't complete the two AP classes or stay on that trajectory, end up repeating at least one class. Or, I should say, they chose not to take an AP class at all, which means not take a math class their senior year, which is also not something that we would want to encourage. So, that's going one direction. So, that can work well.
So, Greg, they have it in their packet.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I will try to, I think I can explain it. So, the other piece of this is, you have to, I thought it'd be interesting to look from the other direction, meaning, the students are in that double A track, that single accelerated track, okay, where did they end up? And in your packet, you can look on there, and if you just look at the top two years, it's, there are lower numbers of lower percentages after that, but this year's seniors and then last year's seniors on there, there's about a third of those students that were able to move themselves up, basically back into that, into that top trajectory, and take AP stats or calc class. So, that's a good number of those students. So, as a whole, as I was looking at that, and I kind of, and Dan and I were kind of rolling it around, I threw out the idea to several of the math people and said, maybe we're deciding to put students on that track a little bit early. Maybe we can't, we're not, as hard as we try, we just, we aren't scooping all the students. Some of these students in here should have probably been on the pre-algebra. And clearly, there's some in the pre-algebra that probably shouldn't have been in the pre-algebra. So, in sixth grade, when they're 12 years old, maybe that's a little early to determine that they're going to be best suited to be in that spot. So, is there a way that we can kind of take one extra year look and scoop some kids up, and in theory, then, hopefully scoop up more students and give more students an opportunity for those enriched classes? So, what we're looking at doing is, we would merge the pre-algebra six into math six. When I first brought that up, the concern of the math department, rightfully so, is, okay, that's a pretty wide range of differentiation, so what can we do with sixth grade? And that's kind of where we're at now. The math department has really brainstormed some really good ideas, with some ideas that have really kind of taken some traction now with some concepts of possibly making it look more similar to the seventh and eighth grade with an A and double A. So, there's a wide variety of things we can do, so they've really kind of wrapped their brain around, okay, I think we can do this. And if we went to something, and it's not set in stone, for sure, we have to still decide, but the A and double A concept in sixth grade, what that does is it really expands the opportunity for students in sixth grade to get some more enrichment. So, then, after a year of having them at the middle school, get that transition underneath their belt, really, then hopefully we can pinpoint the students that really are ready and are the, what I'll call the correct students for their upper track. So, that's kind of the concept behind it. The 30 students that it's referring to there, we did a little bit of an experiment last year, because Dan's kind of a master of Imagine Math, which is kind of a resource for MTSS, but all of our sixth graders also use it. And it's, actually has curriculum that goes beyond the middle school. So, Dan has the ability of creating folders for students. So, he said, okay, Ann Jarvis, Rachel Langer, give us some top kids that are really knocking your class out of the ballpark, and let's see what their MCA scores and map scores in sixth grade is. What if we gave them some summer work that they can work on through this Imagine Math that give you pre-algebra concepts to kind of fill in some gaps that they wouldn't necessarily gotten in Math Six, and then had them go to the Algebra VII, which is, again, the next step up that double accelerated track? Could they go from Math Six to there? I'm happy to report, Pete Moss teaches that class, and he said he cannot see the difference between the two students, between students that came from pre-algebra and the students that did some summer work. He says, yes, there's a few holes that he has to talk to those students about that did that summer work, but he said they're the right students. They're successful, he explains it once, they're motivated, they pick up on it. He said, if you just listed them out, I couldn't tell you which ones were in pre-algebra and which ones were in Math Six. So, that's kind of another kind of driving factor of, okay, we have a tool out there that we can challenge some students that really need some extra challenging. The key will be, one of our next steps will have to be, if we keep going along these lines, is, okay, now we need some new criteria. We were using, as Dan said, fourth and fifth grade scores. Now, coming in, if we have everyone go to Math Six, divide it out there, we're going to have to come up with some new criteria for students to go to Math Seven, or, excuse me, Algebra VII. So, that's still on our plate to do. Some of this I explained, but some of the rationale, as I mentioned, is really, I think it's important for students, it's a big transition from elementary to middle school, and going into an enriched class kind of adds some anxiety. Yes, kids are excited to go into that class, but yet it is a whole lot more work than they're used to. So, why not just get them acclimated to that transition? We talk a lot about transition, it's a building goal at the middle school, is to work on transitions between fifth, sixth, sixth and seventh, seventh and eighth, and then on to the high school. This allows us that opportunity to do so. The calculus, as I, we've already kind of mentioned, that students that are on their upper track, they only have two options their junior year, and that is they have to take those AP classes. So, it's delaying it a year to make a decision, it's going to be in junior, senior year, I think is worth doing, to make sure it's a good fit for those students. Again, the best fit. And then the last one on there, grade five teachers, we love our grade five teachers, and they do a terrific job, but this is a really tough spot to be in. When they're, they're going through and they're grading things, and kids are doing one in their class, it's really hard to tell a parent that, yes, you're a top student in my class, but you're not quite top enough to be in pre-algebra. It's just a really hard conversation to have. They're doing everything they're supposed to do, but when, we've been pulling them out to be in the pre-algebra, we're really talking about the really top of the top tier, and like, it's just a tough conversation, so this would really help them out to not have to do that. And I know several of them have commented that they would really appreciate not having to have that conversation as well. So, next steps. I mentioned about, we need to finalize a plan in sixth grade, because the key to that, to all of this is, is we have to have something that's going to support both our sixth-grade teachers and that large range of differentiation that happens in sixth grade. I think we have a really good start on that, I think the math department, I 100% trust that they're going to come up with a plan that's going to be what's best for students both, on both ends of the spectrum. Then my next goal would be that, once we have that finalized, is to actually kind of do the elementary tour, as I call it, and I will visit all the elementaries, talk to PTOs or whatever, groups that the three principals think would be best, to exploit our rationale and kind of the changes what we have. We'd have a new flowchart, so we could be transparent and show to parents, here's kind of the trend. I'd like to connect that, even though it's an elementary, to the high school, so they kind of see where that's going. But again, it's a big part of educating our parents, as well as, I want to make sure the teachers, the fifth-grade teachers and administrators as well are educated, so they can also answer questions. And then, of course, growth mindset, as I mentioned earlier, any change you make of any type, you have to keep analyzing and making sure that what you're doing is being effective. So, we would clearly have to continue to do that. Like anything, I'm sure there'll be maybe some tweaks along the way, but we would envision, I would envision anyways, making sure we get some students through the middle school to see how they're doing at the high school, to really give us a clear idea of what we're doing is working and expanding our math program. Questions?
Great, thank you. Board members, questions? Amy?
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I liked the presentation, I have several comments. First, my daughter's a senior this year, went to Prairie Creek, and that transition from Prairie Creek to the middle school, in math in particular, was the hardest. And so, I really like that sixth grade becomes an extra year of transition. We, at that point, Prairie Creek was not as strong in math as they are now, they really worked on their math teaching, but the whole approach to teaching is very different than the more traditional classroom. So, there was a lot of learning that had to happen in that first month, and so, I think this approach would help a lot, so I just want to say that. I also am curious about, if you have any sense of numbers? I know it's way too early, but you've talked about how now 30 kids are sort of in the top...
Plus additional 30. So, we had a class of pre-algebra that had 30 students, roughly, yeah, about 30 last year? Yep. And then we had an additional 30 kids that we hadn't, so we doubled. So, we went from one section of Algebra VII that we've had for years, to this year, we have two. So, we have two full classes. So, I've, literally, what the middle school's done is double the amount of enriched math kids that we've, I don't know if we've ever done two pre-algebra's at least in a long time.
And that's fantastic. I have a background where I've worked in admissions for a highly selective school. I worked for Brown University and read applications, I've read applications for Carlton College. I have a sense for those top students, what they're looking for, and it really is the AP classes. And while I don't want to increase everybody's stress and competitiveness, if there are ways of getting the kids who would be interested in that type of education through, this sounds like a great solution to give them more options down the line. So, thank you for that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Great comments. Other questions? Ellen?
So, I just have a couple of questions. One, you talked about the sort of pilot which depended on sort of summer independent enrichment. Does some of this in sixth grade depend on the students doing independent enrichment, or is it more differentiated instruction?
Are you talking like what we're hoping to do?
Right.
Okay. We would include it during the school year. So, for example, if we choose on the A and double A program, the students got through the sixth grade standards, and they call pathways in, on this Imagine Math, they get through the sixth grade pathways, and they have options then, that we can assign those students for enrichment, just like the ones we did last summer, but they could do it during the school year. So, it's pushing them during the school year. I'm kind of envisioning, we'll kind of have to see how that goes, because I think there'd be, that'd be some of the requirements that we have to kind of work through to decide who goes to Algebra VII. I would definitely think they would have to do the sixth grade pathways and the pre-algebra pathways for sure, whether that's done and finalized before the school year's out, or if they do it during the summer. I think that's something we have to wrestle with for a requirement.
But the students would be doing this sort of independently, it wouldn't be like a separate pull-out piece?
Correct. No, it would be independently.
Okay. And then my second question is, do you have any anticipation of how the high school, this kind of locks into getting the students, giving them a longer time to figure out what track, but then, your data is on the high school curriculum, if there's any, if this is how the high school's going to stay the same? I know there, there was some sort of special problems course that is also, that some of the students take, if they, maybe the gray students, that they're not in AP stats and AP calc, that they can choose, and I just was curious as to how this lined up with what the high school was thinking?
When I've talked to Joel, and I've talked to Paul Eddy, and kind of gave him the heads-up when we walked through, actually, Dan and I met, so we could really understand the high school track as well. The part that would not, I don't know what they're thinking moving forward, I know they're having some conversations. I haven't been a part of those, so I can't speak to those. As far as how this would affect them, if anything, it would expand the number of students going into a ninth grade, maybe the honors geometry. It could increase their numbers on that top track. Otherwise, it shouldn't have a bearing as far as what they're, they do.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? No.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I don't want to diminish what you're doing for the top kids, but my question is, what are we doing for the more typical student?
Yep.
And we'll be seeing a presentation on that pretty soon, I hope?
We can surely do that. That's what Dan does at the MTSS. He spends a lot of his day working with the kids that you're referring to. We've had such great success with that program. So, if we split, like, I hate to keep going to A double A, because we haven't finalized that, but it's a good example to give. If we did that, those A kids that are in what I call the typical track, and they need support, they can also qualify to take Dan for MTSS. And that's not in replace of their math, remember, it's an extra scoop. So, they would see Dan, if they're sixth grade, they see Dan every day to support their math, as well as having their regular sixth-grade math teacher. So, they get two hours of math, and to hopefully then get them caught up and fill those, what I call gaps or holes.
Good, thank you.
Other board members' questions? Amy?
So, I assume you would implement this next fall?
That would be our...
So, are you thinking of doing anything for the current students who are going, are you going to continue with the enrichment program to...
Yep.
What are you doing for this year to lead to next year?
Our current program is what we've had in the past. We have, we already have a pre-algebra class, so those students, they typically all advance into Algebra VII. And again, just like last summer, Ann Jarvis and Rachel Langer will kind of look, and they're already keeping an eye on some kids. There's two in particular that it probably would have met, and again, they were a really good example of the fact that they didn't qualify for pre-algebra. As a matter of fact, with the rubrics we use, they weren't even what Dan referred to that plus class, they wouldn't have qualified for that either. But yet, they got into the class, they acclimated to sixth grade, and they just took off. And it's one of those kids that we're referring to that we're missing. And it's mid-year, it's not going to affect them. Students like that, we're looking for, and we'll again offer the summer programming like we did this last summer, so we kind of... So we kind of have that in-between stage until we start kind of the next phase of middle school math, I guess, in sixth grade.
Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions. First of all, I just want to thank you. You're so cognizant of a number of the moving parts and who your decision-making affects. So it's really great to hear how you really covered the bases. You talked, you kind of showed what happens when they get to high school. I wanted to take a step back and talk about, do you see that those students who are identified by fifth grade teachers, do they fall out at a certain percentage when they get either to sixth grade where they pull back and go back to a regular class if they were in the pre-algebra?
The pre-algebra?
You know, do they do that? And then do they also even get to some of their eighth grade and have to pull back to where maybe? And then how often do kids, you know, get moved into those from six? So I guess the whole middle school movement of students once they're identified in fifth grade?
Once the school year starts, early on, every now and then, it's very rare, there'd be a student that we obviously, right off the bat, we map test pretty early in the fall, that we may see and say, ooh, we just totally swing and miss, missed this one. So we would add someone to a pre-algebra. But for the most part, once the students get in pre-algebra currently, they all move to Algebra VII and then they all move to Algebra II. It's not very often that someone would be to the point of saying, unless their anxiety or something like that kicks in, but for the most part, they move as a group. Where it then comes in is Algebra II. And Pete Moss does a really good job having a really blunt conversation with families saying, you know, they can take and stay on this track, but here's what you're going to expect, and here's what I see your student doing. So they're being successful in the math class, but he has that conversation of saying, okay, here's kind of the reality moving forward, and you have to make some decisions. So that would be the spot where kids start falling back a level. But through the middle school years, once they have gotten in the past, again, that pre-algebra, sixth grade, they just go right through to Algebra II.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Dr. Hillman?
Yes. As you imagine, I have a couple of comments here.
Absolutely.
So first, if I, I might need to pay Greg Gellino for using the term "what's next" because I know that's one of my favorite terms. So I really appreciate the middle school's just very clear commitment to continuous improvement, whether it's an area that we have concerns about or it's an area that we're proud of, like our accelerated math track. So kudos to the math teachers for being willing to take a look at their current reality and saying, how can we make this better for everybody? I also want to point out that it connects in several ways to our strategic plan. If you think about the opening clause of our vision that talks about, we will prepare every, with every underlined, every student for lifelong success. And having the appropriate math instruction at the appropriate time is so important for lifelong success so students can then, of course, one of our near-term priorities, have equitable opportunities and support for all career and college pathways. We're not taking people out of the advanced math track with this thought process. We're actually opening the door for more children to be part of the advanced math track. And with the need for engineers and computer scientists and all those other kinds of things, we know a common denominator is having a higher level of numeracy and a higher level of skill in mathematics. So by just taking this pause and letting children adapt, you know, to, through one of the bigger changes that they're going to have in the K-12 system, if we could double the number of kids who could get on that advanced track, that's wonderful. As important, if there's a student who might need that regular pace, so it's because I think sometimes we forget that our regular pace is the pace for most other schools, that that's what you get. And so the fact that, you know, really strengthening that regular pace in a way, using Imagine Learning, some other tools that are allowing our math teachers, and I'd love Dan to talk about Imagine Math for a moment if you can, because I think that allows us to hyper-differentiate in a way that we could never have done it as human beings before using this tool. It allows us to give more kids that just-in-time instruction, and again, supporting that equitable opportunities for every career and college pathway. And I think the whole presentation, ooh, is robust core instruction. So we've talked about what is robust core instruction. I think they talked about that here tonight, trying to meet children at each of their levels and make sure that they can be successful moving forward. So I absolutely understand that, you know, there might be some concept in thinking that by delaying your entry into the math, the advanced math track for a year, you know, that we may be slowing things down or going backwards, but in reality, I think it's taking a pause in order to create a pathway where nearly twice the amount of kids could enjoy that opportunity. And so I think it's just, I really applaud the math department at the middle school and Principal Gellino's leadership in terms of looking at, how can we provide that opportunity for every student and help them get through that initial, what most people would say may be the most difficult transition in their entire K-12 career, right? I think some parents might say kindergarten is it, but I would say sixth grade can be that. So I don't, could Dan talk just a little bit about Imagine Math? Because I think we talked about, we skimmed over, I mean, this is a very powerful tool.
Yeah. So Imagine Math is an online program that we use with, we started using it with our AdSIS kids, our struggling learners, when they come to my room for that extra scoop of math that Greg is talking about. So these are kids who are in a single A math class, they're in the regular math, but that, even that pace is a little too fast for them, need extra support. And so in my classroom, they work on Imagine Math, they also get help on math assignments, and we work on some computation, written computation skills. It's an online learning tool. They take a benchmark test where it places them at a level, and it gives them basically customized math lessons, identifies needs, and it kind of goes through a progression. As a teacher, you have control over what, sort of what lessons they get. So if I see a student who is really struggling, doesn't understand basic multiplication concepts, I can make a pathway, is what Greg called this, called a pathway of activities for that student to work through that has multiplication concepts. The great thing about it is it also goes high. So the sixth grade teachers use it with all of our students. All of our sixth graders have Imagine Math. And we've got some of those high flyers that are in Ann Jarvis and Rachel Langer's class that have finished all of the sixth grade level content already this year, and they're already working on seventh grade concepts. So within that classroom, they're able to sort of provide activities for the, both ends of the spectrum and everybody in between. And so that has given us another tool that, now we can use that as, to help differentiate in sixth grade, to sort of identify more of these high flyers that we might not have caught with the old process of looking for, looking at fourth and fifth grade data and trying to, trying to make those decisions when they're coming out of fifth grade. And this gives us a little bit more flexibility now where we might, we'll be more accurate with who gets into that, and it's the right kids. And hopefully, you know, the 70% hit rate that I think it was, where 70% of those kids who started in sixth grade were making it all the way through. Hopefully, we have a larger group and more of them are making it through because we're identifying the right kids at the right time.
So I really appreciate, Dan, you taking the moment to share that because I want to also be really clear that what Dan described is what I would say is the ideal description of customized learning. It is using a very, very robust online tool that is under the complete control of a caring adult. Dan and the teachers know these students, they know the kids, and when you partner that online tool with the adult who cares and knows about them, that's where the magic sauce can happen. If, some people might say, well, we're just going to put some kids on this online piece and we're going to let them go. That does not work. That, we know that that does not work. We know when you partner it with that caring teacher who knows the students, who has a good relationship with them, with the data, that's where we can see this incredible advancement. And so I really applaud you. I mean, and again, to go back to, so people understand, I've seen this attempted to be done before we had the tools that computers provide us today, to provide this. And I watched math teachers spend entire weekends creating these pathways in paper packets. I know this because I happen to be married to one of those math teachers now, watching her. Over the weekend, every child in her class saying, this is the path that this student needs. And it took hours and hours and hours. And now it can be done in terms of knowing the student, using a computerized pathway that can provide the sample sets and those kinds of things, and can be changed in a moment's notice if the initial assessment was incorrect, which just happens from time to time. So I could not be more thrilled with this presentation and how Imagine Math could be partnered with our regular curriculum to provide that really, again, that differentiation that is very difficult for us and for our teachers to do. They're only human beings, they can only do so much, you know, at a time, but this allows them to provide that content at a student's level, which we know is so important for them as they move forward. And I think what it's going to do is it's going to open the doors for a number of other STEM careers that where the doors may not have been opened before. So as you can tell, I'm a little pumped up about this. I know you're shocked by that.
Ellen?
So one of the things I appreciate after hearing the presentation and then your remarks, Dr. Hillman, is it sounds like you're kind of also taking the angst out of like the fifth grade, you know, test. And I remember that the kids all knew, this is what's going to track me. So not only is it like a scary MCA or math test, but it's also, this is going to depend my whole life is on this, you know? So I like the idea that you're giving them an extra time in that it, like, thinking about the meaningful measures and not, and taking that anxiety away from kids. That's great.
I think, you know, I mean, I'm sure as they develop the criteria, that some of our regular standardized assessments will also be used, but the beauty of something like Imagine Math and the common form of assessments and the end-of-unit-chapter tests is that you are able to use more criteria that work in. So if a student has a bad day in fourth grade, you know, okay, you know, in this approach, all of those things get worked into the mix over time. And I think, you know, you talk about the anxiety, and let's just go back to recognize that we're talking about children in some cases who are 11 years old. We're making a decision about their pathway for most of these kids when they're 11 years old. Think of your own children, what you reminded them to have to do when they're 11 years old, let alone, you know, performing on that one-time, you know, math assessment. So, you know, my opinion is you move forward, you're using more data and a smarter way to make a better decision, which, that's what we're here for, to make sure we give kids opportunities.
Yes. Greg, you had some?
No, I was, I didn't know if you had any else.
Board members, other questions or comments?
Well, excellent presentation. Appreciate all your work and, again, really embracing the process of continuous improvement and growth mindset. And I think that your plans to communicate this, I think, are really strong, and I think parents will appreciate, you know, understanding from you where, you know, what the changes are and how they'll be implemented. So I think it's really, really strong.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Okay. So next, we have for discussion and report co-curricular additions. This information was part of your packet.
Yes, so.
Dr. Hillman?
Yeah, so this evening, I just wanted to share with you, as you know, with one of the changes that we did in the Northfield Education Association Agreement last summer, we now have an opportunity to review potential additions, tractions, those kinds of things to the co-curricular grid. Again, that's the grid that governs the adults who work with our activities, our sports and those kinds of things. And we hadn't made any additions to that particular grid for probably four years now because of the way that it had worked within the contract. And so our co-curricular committee has made some additional recommendations for some additions. These additions, we're not asking you to vote on them tonight, I'm just bringing them to your attention. And basically, they are all for next year, so we're not trying to do anything in-flight this year. So it's something that Val Merstorf can prepare as part of the budget for next year. As we see a number of these pieces, and I'm not going to go through each of them since you have them before you, many of them are because we have additional student participation or the complexity has grown since it was, a group, an activity was last classified. And so you've seen this kind of memo at least once before. So again, just wanted to bring this for your information and also take any questions that people have. We're not asking you to vote on it tonight, we'll have another opportunity the next time, but this is the process. I anticipate this is going to slow down after this because we did have some backup, you know, in terms of the kinds of positions that have been being considered over the past couple of years. These are recommendations that have come forward from the co-curricular committee, and I am making, or I will be making a recommendation that we adopt these at the next meeting. But want to make sure you have them, and if you have any questions this evening, I certainly can do my best to answer them. Otherwise, we can also prepare and answer them at the February 26th board meeting when we ask you to vote on them.
Okay. Excellent. Questions or comments? Okay. So as Dr. Hillman said, this will be an item for individual action on our February 26th board meeting. So if there's any questions or comments you have prior to that, you could get to Dr. Hillman. Okay. Excellent. We'll move on to our next item for discussion, which is legislative updates. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I just want to point out that I think on the agenda in your memorandum, we had transposed these. So on the agenda, it had it in one order between this and the summary of the superintensive mid-year evaluation. But I think it's okay to do the legislative, or to do them both, but I think in one it was letter C and the other was letter D. So please forgive us as we're working through that. So legislative update, wanted just to share, the session's getting ready to begin, and again, it's a, what we call a non-funding year session, of course, which is really not the case because every year there is something usually that is funded. But we all know that the November forecast demonstrated a deficit as we move forward. We're waiting for the February forecast to come out. I don't think any of the committees or anyone are really going to even start thinking about any kind of spending until they see the February forecast. There was some concern that, for various reasons, the November forecast was underestimating some of the tax revenue that was being brought in. So it's interesting because we have already started to talk or hear from legislators, and what we're hearing is that there's really probably not going to be a lot done this session. Because when there's no money, they amazingly tend to not do a whole lot from time to time. I have given you three of the different agendas or the different legislative agendas from organizations that the district participates in. You have the Minnesota School Boards Association, you have the Schools for Equity and Education, and you have the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. I'm not going to go through each of these or spend a lot of time on this because I know that you can review it. We will make sure that people are invited to the Schools for Equity and Education Day at the Capitol that is coming up, I believe, on March 13th.
Tuesday, March 13th.
Tuesday, March, so if there are some board members who have an interest in going to that, or you know community members, you might be interested in having us take along. It's a very informative day to learn about how the legislative process works, to talk to some of our legislators. Deb Griffithson and C do a great job of that tour for the day. If you've never gone on that tour, you know, we can take up to three board members, you know, and it's, it is really kind of eye-opening. So if people have an interest in going, please let Julie or I know.
On the 13th?
March 13th. Tuesday, March 13th. Most of the, as you look across all the agendas from the various organizations, we do see some, we see quite a bit of alignment. I will just highlight a couple of different pieces. Again, we are, in a couple of the groups, we are trying to look for an additional 1% on the base formula. I'll be straightforward that I think that what we've heard so far is no chance, but it's important for us to advocate in the legislature to allocate. Something interesting that I want to point to your attention in the C agenda is there's been a couple of districts who have been tossing the idea around of advocating for a constitutional amendment to increase the state's sales tax by 1% for the purposes of some additional funding for education. Now, as they have started to think and talk about this, they've presented it to about a dozen groups. Julie and I had a chance to hear it at the C meeting last Friday. It's different. It's an interesting approach, and their point is that, you know, we have continued to play catch-up, you know, in terms of base formula and those kinds of things, and that this could be a way that the people of the state, you know, could provide some additional funding for schools. Now, there's also a lot of discussion about that kind of proposal. We're not sure if it will, it would even be heard at the legislature, but what I do applaud, the districts who have brought this forward, is that they are trying to think a little bit differently. And when they began the talks, they were looking at specifying that that 1% sales tax increase be used for the purposes of reducing the special education cross subsidy, which is another plank that is in several of our agendas, because as we know, special education is a moral imperative. Everyone here at this table, and we completely believe in fully funding special education. The federal government apparently does not believe in fully funding special education, bear law. And Val, I'm going to just, we're, the last time we checked, we were a little north of $3 million in our local cross subsidy.
Yeah, about 3.6.
So $3.6 million of our general fund that we are using to pay for mandated special education services, all of which we think are really important. However, it just goes to show that the feds have not kept up, and so we have to try to do something within Minnesota to do that. So that's going to be a piece that you're going to see on all of the legislative agendas. I think the other piece that will be pushed hard is the TRA, Teachers Retirement Association. As you know, that this was a casualty of the session last year because TRA, its long-term actuarial analysis shows some erosion in that fund quite a bit down the line, but we know that every year that we kick the can down the road, that problem becomes bigger. TRA has long been looked at as a pretty well-funded pension, but there are some actuarial concerns that the legislature has been made clearly aware of, and yet they have now not dealt with it two sessions in a row. And so we anticipate that hopefully there will be some push. There was some positive momentum on this at the end of last session, but it didn't make it into the final deal. And of course, we are advocating that if there is an increase to the contribution required of employers to TRA, that the state cover that, because in effect, what would happen is if they said that employers have to increase their contribution, but they don't give us a corresponding funding increase, we are going to take that from our general fund. So there's been a number of iterations of how this would work. There's been some talk about, you know, of course, not only employer increase of contribution, but potentially a retiree decrease in what they, their coal rate. There's been some talk, though it's not been in every version of this, where the employee would also pick up some of that increase. So we will be watching TRA because every year that they do delay it, it does erode that fund actuarially as we look down the line. And so it's in a good position right now, but the state really needs to take care of it. It's a promise that has been made to a lot of public employees, and the legislature really needs to take care of that. So again, when we're not in a funding year, the key thing that we're watching, and I've told a couple of legislators that we'll be watching, to make sure that they don't end up adding policy that costs us money, because that has frequently happened in the second year of a biennium, where since there's no money to spend, they do some kind of policy piece, and then that policy piece actually ends up costing us money without any funding. So we will be watching and we'll be loudly advocating that they stay away from those kinds of proposals, though we're relatively sure there'll be several of them during the session. So again, we don't have a crystal ball because there's a lot of, a lot will ride on the February forecast. Typically, this would have been a bonding year. You know, we will see. The one thing that we did hear from Senator Pratt, who was the chair, one of the folks in the Senate on the Finance Committee, he talked about what he thinks is going to be the big piece at the legislature this time will be, how does Minnesota reconcile its tax code with the recent changes at the federal level? And he talked about a potential Minnesota tax increase of $850 million across the state if they don't do something to address some of the things that are now coming down from the feds. So that's outside of education, but of course, it always impacts us. So I think that those are the things that I would suggest that we just look at. There's a number of other pieces that I encourage you to review. If you have questions on any of the items that are listed in any of the platforms, I'd be happy to do my best to address them. And of course, we can get folks from C or from MSBA or MASAA to give us some additional information. I have sat in on both the C and the MASAA Legislative Committee because it is important that we make sure that our voice is heard in that process. So, and it's fun for me.
Questions, comments?
I would just thank Dr. Hillman for that. You know, I know there's a lot of extra meetings, but you were able to really, you know, impact the platforms for both C and MASAA with your input, and not only benefits Northfield, but students statewide. You know, you have a really good sense of how these platforms need to be written and positioned, and certainly understand the issues that we face here on the front lines. So thank you for your extra work on that.
I do think MASAA was struggling to get theirs into the, you know, the vaunted, you know, couple of sentences, and so I do think that they called in an expert editor by the name of Dr. Chris Richardson to come in to help them up at the state level with that, so.
Excellent. Good. Well, thank you. Okay. Moving through the agenda, we have the summary of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation, and it is absolutely my pleasure to do that. Board members, this report was in your table file, and I do want to go through it. It gives us a good opportunity not only for, you know, to recognize the work that Dr. Hillman has done in just the first six months of the school year, but also for board members to see the comments that were shared. The comments were shared, obviously, Dr. Hillman, but verbatim, but they weren't attributed to a specific board member. So just to recap, all seven board members completed the mid-year performance appraisal, and there was numeric ratings provided on a 1 to 5 scale. One was low and five was high for 52 job responsibilities organized around 10 major topics. So and as I said, in addition to completing the numeric ratings, board members provide additional comments. As board chair, I compiled and summarized all board members' input for Dr. Hillman. For the numeric ratings, means were calculated. All written comments were shared verbatim, but were not attributed to a specific board member. As board chair, I met one-on-one with Dr. Hillman on February 7th, 2018, to review this appraisal. Board members gave Dr. Hillman a very strong performance rating across all key areas. His overall average score was 4.9 on a 5-point scale across the 52 areas. His exceptional work over the past six months was highlighted by board members. A sampling of their comments is summarized below around four key areas of strength. And if I may, I'd like to read those. Dr. Hillman's exceptional work in administrating all aspects of the district's operating levy and bond election in November 2017 was one key area of strength. The comments that supported this. The salient superintendent goal, in my view, was a 2017 levy and bond election. Dr. Hillman's diligence was clearly evident. He prepared the board members, board voters, staff, volunteers, and all stakeholders to the highest degree afforded by technology. He made himself available to all questions in an honest and transparent manner. This bond and levy question was a large ask for our voters, and although they turned down the bond, Dr. Hillman remains optimistic and forward-thinking about the district's facilities. Another board member commented, "Dr. Hillman's work on the 2017 levy and bond referendum was truly impressive. He shouldered the lion's share of the responsibilities around not only the administration of the referendum, but also the creation of the district's ubiquitous informational campaign. He was masterful in reacting to the real-time community feedback by bolstering what aspects of the campaign were resonating with district voters and recognizing where opportunities still existed." And lastly, aligned the performance on the operating levy. His addition of the high school tours, as well as adding several more community presentations, are just two examples. In the end, Dr. Hillman is to be commended for what, in my view, was arguably one of the strongest and most comprehensible, comprehensive informational campaigns in the history of our district. I believe the relationships Dr. Hillman was able to forge with the district's constituents will pay strong dividends going forward. Second theory of strength highlighted by board members was Dr. Hillman's outstanding communication and relationship-building skills. To support that, board members' comments included, "Dr. Hillman is an extraordinarily effective communicator. He realizes the need to continue to reach out to people who have felt disengaged from the decision-making process. Dr. Hillman regularly looks for ways to get parent and community input into board decisions, from in-person presentations and meetings to the online thought exchange, and most recently, a possible random survey of our citizens. He's always looking to collect and consider as much information and many ideas as possible. He personally responds to email from community members, and I regularly see him at non-school community events where he is just available for informal conversations. He definitely has a presence in Northfield. Dr. Hillman's exceptional strength is one of a prolific communicator. As superintendent, he is faced with competing priorities on a daily basis. Yet his steadfast commitment to keeping the district's stakeholders informed and engaged in the issues facing our schools is an unwavering priority. Dr. Hillman communicates well with staff, the board, and stakeholders in the district. He prefers face-to-face with people so he can better understand their verbal and non-verbal communication. He is a highly effective communicator. In addition, board members, a board member stated, "Dr. Hillman's well-placed priority of being visible in the district building have helped him develop a rapport with all levels of district staff. When in the buildings, he makes himself not only visible, but also very accessible. He enjoys interacting with staff. His genuine and friendly manner makes him feel immediately at ease, and most importantly, as a result of these one-on-one interactions, truly valued for the work they do." To go on, "Dr. Hillman has developed an excellent working relationship with the local media. During the 2017 referendum election, he was able to leverage these relationships to get expanded coverage of the referendum. One of the exceedingly positive outcomes of the referendum campaign was the number of relationships Dr. Hillman not only forged, but continues to foster with community members, many of whom who had not previously been engaged in school district issues." Another board member commented, "I'm impressed at how productive and collegial the relationship is between the administration and the NEA. Their contractual goals don't always align 100%, but both groups are absolutely committed to the overall goal of providing Northfield students with the best possible education. Where disagreements occur, negotiations seem to be mutually respectful and productive." Another comment, "The relationship with the district and the two charter schools it authorizes is exemplary. Dr. Hillman's outstanding efforts to fortify the district's relationship of mutual respect, trust, and collaboration with the two charter schools has resulted in what is arguably a model for charter schools nationwide." And now, lastly, the comment around Dr. Hillman's exceptional communication and development, relationship-building skills. Board member commented, "Dr. Hillman has developed strong working relationships with area superintendents in Fairbough, Hastings, and Owatonna, to name a few. These valuable relationships not only benefit Dr. Hillman with his own personal development, but he's able to use them as excellent sources of information when seeking possible new approaches in dealing with district issues." The third area of strength was Dr. Hillman's commitment to the district's strategic plan. I appreciate how Dr. Hillman always frames his work through the lens of the district's strategic plan. For many people, it can be easy to overlook a long-range strategic plan in the day-to-day running of an institution, but not for Dr. Hillman. I enjoy how he often recites the plan aloud at board meetings, showing us how the many and varied efforts of the district staff really align with the board's expressed path as outlined in the plan. Excellent work. Dr. Hillman continually creates goals that are measurable, achievable, and focused on high expectations for our staff and students. His determination to close the Northfield achievement gap is evident in both his speech and actions. Dr. Hillman is exceptional at creating clear goals and reporting results in a clearly and timely manner. I always trust Dr. Hillman's transparent approach to plans and their resulting data." And when sharing, let's see, "Dr. Hillman demonstrated his strong commitment to the district's strategic plan when he initiated the strategic plan check-in survey that was distributed to all the Northfield School District members in October. When sharing the results, he readily acknowledged the opportunities that exist to better communicate decision-making and its alignment with the strategic plan. Dr. Hillman has truly walked the talk when he committed to this plan not being put on a shelf to collect dust." And lastly, the fourth area of strength was Dr. Hillman's excellent management of the district finances. And in support of that, board members commented, "Dr. Hillman's leadership and his outstanding team manage the fiscal affairs to the highest level. I particularly appreciated the narrative one-sheeter that accompanies the various budget reports to the board. Superintendent Hillman and staff are excellent with budgets and money, and I trust them completely." In addition, comments around fiscal responsibility, "Dr. Hillman is fiscally responsible and promotes the plans and solutions for the district that will allow the district to have good prudent reserves in the challenging years." And lastly, "Dr. Hillman is extremely conscious of the need for fiscal responsibility and transparency. He is diligent in his reporting and serious about the need for prudence when handling taxpayers' charts." So in summary, board members gave Dr. Hillman an exceedingly positive mid-year performance review and great confidence in your leadership in moving the district forward. So thank you and for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
It's my pleasure to serve you.
Yes, and thank you to board members for providing good context around Dr. Hillman's performance. Excellent. So we will move on now to items for individual action. Resolution requiring administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for next year. This is something we do yearly as part of the budget process. Did you want to provide an overview before a motion, and then we could ask questions?
Well, sure. Again, as part of the prudent financial management of the district, every year we ask you to take this particular resolution, whether or not we're planning to make budget reductions or not, because again, as you've heard, we look at programs, whether they are currently successful, or if there are some issues where maybe we don't have as many students in a particular program area from year to year, we want to make sure that those resources can be reallocated to support students in other areas. So this is the annual resolution that allows us to do this moving forward.
Okay, excellent. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, here we go. Is there a motion to authorize the administration to make recommendations for additions and reductions in program and for adding or discontinuing positions? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Any discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. After all that discussion, I knew this was a resolution. So I'm sorry, this calls for a roll call vote. So Anita? Everwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Nell?
Aye.
Eversen?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Our second item for individual action is ratification of employment action. Is there a motion to approve ratification of employment action? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anita, did I ask for a motion and a second on consent grouping? I don't know that I did. No, I didn't. I'm sorry. Okay, so is there anything anyone would like to pull? Someone would like to pull anything? I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Okay, now, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will move on then to items for information. Board members, you had in your packet the school board committee assignments. I know they were emailed to you, but we wanted to be sure that everyone had a hard copy of your committee assignments, so thank you for everyone's work on those committees. Next, we have the enrollment report. Dr. Hillman?
So as we like to say, we're in the cruising altitude part of the year, and you'll see that our February 1 number is, overall, is exactly the same as it was in January. You know, a few changes making up that number, but again, just under, one student under 4,000.
Excellent. Any questions on the, or comments on the enrollment report? Nope? Okay. The last item for information, Dr. Hillman, we are officially canceling the March 26, 2018 board meeting.
So as you know, when we schedule board meetings, we always schedule them for both, you know, both the second and fourth Mondays of the month, but March 26 falls during spring break, and we know many board members have plans to be out of calendar during spring break, so we are just not going to have that meeting, and that's very common. You know, it's actually quite rare that we have two board meetings in March, so you can take it off of your calendars, and we will update the website tomorrow morning to reflect that.
Excellent. So with that announcement of future meetings, Monday, February 26, and then again, Monday, March 12, 2018, both at 7:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.